Good evening, everyone. Call to order, and I'm going to do this verbatim so I don't mess it up. So, welcome to the annual organizational meeting of the Halton District School Board for Wednesday, December 2nd, 2015. At this time, call for mover and seconder for motion to approve the agenda. Leah, mover. Seconder, Jean. Trustees are reminded to declare any potential conflict...
Call for a vote.
Oh, do I have to vote?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, no, I don't. Can we have a vote for that, please?
Guys, can you key in that? It's entered in there.
What do I do?
You don't do anything, they can do it from back there, I think. Oh, yeah, 'cause you guys... Okay, never mind, guys. Show of hands, sorry.
Show of hands.
Yeah. All in favor?
All in favor of the motion? Okay. Good thing you're sitting here. Ready? Trustees are reminded to declare any potential conflict of interest. Video voice recording phones and other electronic devices. Board meeting is being livestreamed and video voice recorded for podcast. Please turn off all items that might beep, ring, or make noise. So I'm gonna describe the process exactly the way it's written here so that everybody understands.
For the elections.
Yeah, for the elections. Under the board's bylaws, the Director of Education chairs the meeting until the election of the chair. Process for elections is outlined in the bylaw. Annual meetings of the board and is the same for the role of Chair and Vice Chair. In summary, the election process will be conducted as follows. Each trustee's name will be drawn to allow each trustee the opportunity to indicate her interest in the elected position or indicate support for another trustee. Those trustees who have indicated their interest may speak for a period of three minutes in the order their names were drawn. Following the candidate's speeches, ballots will be distributed and trustees will be invited to cast their votes. Our scrutineers for tonight are Jerry Cullen, Superintendent of Facilities, and Lucy Veerman, Superintendent of Business Services. The candidate receiving the majority of votes cast will be declared elected. So I'm gonna read this bit. We were only gonna read it in the event that this happened, but just so we're aware. In the event of a tie, in the event where ballots cast are for three candidates, the candidate with the least number of votes will be dropped from the subsequent ballot. Should this result in a tie between two candidates, a name will be drawn from those candidates who tied, and that candidate will proceed to the next ballot. In the event two candidates tie for the position of the director, for the position, the director will draw from those names, selecting the name of the candidate who will be named to the role. Any questions before we start the actual election process? Okay. So I'll put it up there so you can see.
And all eleven names are...
All right, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna draw your names and ask the trustees if you're interested in position of Chair or speaking on behalf of another trustee. Trustee Reynolds. Trustee Harvey Hope. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you, but no.
Trustee Grevens. Trustee Gray.
No, thank you.
Trustee Amos.
I would be honored to run.
Trustee Pappin. Trustee Collard.
Thank you, yes, I would like to run.
Trustee Graves. Trustee Al Harrison.
I'm really honored to hold the position of trustee, and I decline to run for this. Thank you.
And finally, trustee Oliver.
I respectfully decline, thank you.
Okay. All right. So I'll now call the names in the same order as they express an interest. Trustee Amos, you have three minutes to speak about your candidacy.
Thank you. And congratulations to all of my fellow trustees on completing your first year of your term. It has been a very interesting year, and we're very much to be proud of, including our growth, collaboration, and cooperation as a newly formed team. We have also worked together to face some interesting and challenging issues, including labor negotiations and the resulting sanctions, hiring our new director, associate director, and executive officer of human resources, and a new superintendent. The implementation of a program viability consultation process, and the provincial advocacy of our board, whether it's seeking increased provincial funding or recognition for the work of the National Truth and Reconciliation Commission. Some of these things will be ongoing, but there will also be many opportunities for our next year, including developing a multi-year plan, advocating for the funding of new schools, and our ongoing support of our community schools and the students we serve. We've already focused on many of the things at this table, but as trustees, you know our work goes way beyond this boardroom. I look forward to continuing this work together as our efforts to promote public education in Halton. As you know, one of my strengths is my focus on communication. As Chair, I initiated a Chair's Weekly Report reinforcing my belief in regular communication between the Chair and all trustees, which is very important. I believe it's integral to this culture of open and transparent communication. Regular dialogue enhances a trustee's ability to represent their community and to build a better understanding within the community. The more dialogue that happens at this table allows us to understand each other in the way we think. So I believe, as Chair, I have helped facilitate some of those crucial conversations, helping us as a team to grow and learn from each other. We all bring different strengths, experiences, and knowledge to this table, and I believe it provides us a balance between the interests of a broader community and those with focused interests. As your Chair, I will continue to encourage our different viewpoints, respect the varied perspectives, and work collaborative to make decisions that will benefit all students. Thanks to all of you, our committees have given us an excellent opportunity to discuss items before they come to the board. I believe that the steps we have taken towards a committee of the whole format will help us prioritize more efficiently and possibly achieve a better work-life balance without sacrificing our discussions or decision-making. Having served in prior years as Vice Chair and Chair, I believe my experience and strengths will also help lead this board beyond this table to create an environment of willingness and ongoing partnerships. I have facilitated a joint meeting with the Halton Catholic District School Board regarding transportation and initiated meetings with our Halton MPPs in the town of Oakville. But there are many more partnerships for us to explore. I believe a Chair should be a facilitator, a communicator, and have the ability to make the commitment to represent the board at as many activities. As your Chair, I have been your spokesperson at system events, including Halton Showcase, Student Excellence, celebrating service, the Eddies, and the Pick Parent Conference, and others, as well as outside with the ministry and the media. I thank you for your support for this year as your Chair, for the past year, and I would be honored and appreciative for your continued support for the upcoming year. Thank you so much.
Trustee Collard, you now have three minutes.
Thank you. It's been my honor to serve as your Vice Chair for the first year of our term, a year that seems to have passed by in a whirlwind of activity, from hiring our new director, associate director, and other members of our dynamic senior administrative team, to beginning our program viability study, to participating in labor negotiations, and everything in between. We've embraced the values that are posted prominently on our wall and promoted, equitable and inclusive practices that support the safety and well-being of every student in our board. There's a renewed sense of purpose around this table, and I am proud to be among you. As we embark on a new year, we need to prepare ourselves for a number of significant undertakings. Public consultations for the program viability study will soon be underway. We will also begin to focus on our multi-year plan, a collaborative effort that will determine our path forward as a board. And we will be turning our attention to accommodation pressures in various areas of our board as well. I believe in the collective knowledge, wisdom, and passion that we have around this table. I value your contributions as we work together to find solutions and reach consensus on issues, and I look forward to continuing to support your work. I also value your time, and I recognize that each of us have different levels of flexibility in our schedules. As Chair, I will consult with you prior to scheduling activities or special meetings that you might be expected to attend, in the effort to find a time when we are all mutually available. I will also respect your availability by working with you to simplify our processes and become more efficient in our use of time. One of the ideas that we've begun to consider is returning to a committee of the whole structure for our standing committees. Since many of our topics overlap multiple committees, our current format is too restrictive and complex to be effective. In committee of the whole, all facets of an issue could be discussed in one meeting, thereby completing the work more efficiently. We've also discussed implementing a consent agenda, which would allow more time to focus on the action and information items being presented in our meetings. These two small changes could make a big difference in our productivity. As Chair, I will continue to be inclusive, openly seeking your input and advice on matters of consequence, preparing a weekly Chair's Report which will summarize the activities of the week, and ensure that you're aware of the opportunities for you to attend events in the following week, and inviting all trustees to participate in opportunities to build relationships with our counterparts in various levels of government. I will also continue to put my organizational skills to good use, to ensure that urgent matters are given the highest priority, and that they reach a successful conclusion in a timely manner. I've often heard the Chair of the Board described as being "the first among equals." This is because the Chair presides at public meetings of the Board and is the spokesperson for the Board. Quite often, though, the Chair is actually "the last among equals." Traditionally, the Chair waits until all other trustees have had the opportunity to speak on a topic before adding their own name to the speaker's list, and the Chair rarely moves a recommendation, instead seeking a mover and seconder for motions. Whether you perceive the Chair to be the first or the last among equals, I believe the most important word in that quote is "equals." We each have one vote, regardless of position, and each vote has an equal weighting. One trustee cannot effect change alone. It requires the will of the majority of trustees to give life to a motion. The year ahead will bring many difficult decisions to our board table. As Chair, I will continue to foster your creativity and ingenuity, and I will represent our board in a professional manner. Thank you for the support you've given me in the past year and your anticipated support this evening.
Thank you, trustees Collard and Amos. I'll now ask for the ballots. Gail will distribute the ballots, and our two scrutineers will then take the ballots. Thank you, scrutineers. Congratulations, Chair Amos. You've been renewed as Chair, Chairperson of the board, Halton District School Board.
You may want to do that again. Leah wants to have a picture.
She can share with me.
Putting her on the payroll.
Now we clap.
Yes. Kelly, Stuart can help you with that if you'd like.
We're doing that before we speak, yeah?
Yeah, you do exactly the same thing for Vice Chair.
What do we do with this?
Let me get my agenda.
That was a lot of pressure.
I forgot what I'm supposed to do. Sorry.
You have the opportunity for a monologue on the address of the Board.
I'm going to defer the address till after the election of the Vice Chair, I think. We'll do it first. Okay, so we're going to call each name and see who is interested in the position of Vice Chair.
Oh, I have to read it.
Trustee Oliver.
I respectfully decline, thank you.
Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you, but no.
Trustee Collard.
Yes, please, thank you.
I'm not voting for... And I'm not running again. Trustee Graves.
I'm happy to allow my name to stand, please for consideration, thank you.
Trustee Harvey Hope. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you, but no.
Trustee Grevens.
I respectfully decline, thank you.
Trustee Al Harrison.
No, thank you.
And trustee Gray.
No, thank you.
So we now have two candidates for the position of Vice Chair, and we will ask them to speak in the order that they were drawn. Trustee Collard.
Thank you. It would be my honor to serve as your Vice Chair again this year. We still have, I believe, a lot of work to do in terms of the processes and policies and bylaws that govern our board, and I would like to be an active part of bringing those to life. And I believe that I have served the board well in the past year in the position, and I would be honored to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Graves.
Thank you. It's very tempting, given the makeup of the board, to say, "May the best woman win." However, that's not what we're being asked to do here tonight. I think we're both pretty awesome, but the question before us is, who is the best fit for this position, for this Board of Trustees, at this point in time? And you'll notice that I haven't really campaigned for the position. That was an intentional choice, it's because you've seen how I operate over the past year, and I'm quite happy to, you know, allow my record to stand on its own, although I was quite happy to answer questions from those of you who had them, and we had some great conversations that I very much enjoyed. But for the Vice Chair position, I would aim to collaborate very well with everyone, to strive to make sure that everyone's voice is heard and reflected in the decisions that we make, and this is evidenced in the work that we've done together at PBNG. As you know, I'm a rule follower, almost to a fault. I take very seriously our rules and our responsibilities, our policies, bylaws, guidelines, and the regulations that we must follow, so I feel I'd be an excellent guide to the board in this regard. I feel I should comment on just the bridge that I could span between being a new trustee and being a returning trustee. I'm known as the half-trustee, so I think I could work very well with everyone in that capacity. So my goal would also be to support the Chair. I think we work quite well together, a good working relationship, but also to serve you. Facilitation of communication between the Chair, the Board, with staff, and with the community would be a significant goal, as well as the successful and effective completion of TPR. So as I mentioned earlier, we have a decision to make about who should help to lead us in this, our second year, and if that's me, I'm happy to serve you as Vice Chair for the next year. However, I will be, as always, supportive of any decision this board makes. Thank you.
Thank you. So I am going to ask Gail to pass around the ballots, and each trustee will now mark We have a couple of members here who are very musical, I know that for a fact. Maybe they could sing a Christmas carol, or we could all sing a Christmas carol in the meantime, or... Where else? If you get the audience to sing us a Christmas carol. I would like to thank both candidates for putting their name forward. And this year's Vice Chair is Kim Graves. Congratulations. This is my opportunity to make an inaugural address, and the Vice Chair will also get the opportunity, if she so desires. But first, I'd like to express my wholehearted appreciation and thanks to my colleagues for your continued success, or support. Sorry, can tell I'm... I'd like to congratulate each and every one of you for what you have done in the past year, the first year of our term. We are a group of leaders, and we've all had opportunities through committees and here at the board table to demonstrate that. I would like to congratulate Vice Chair Graves on becoming Vice Chair. And I would really like to wholeheartedly thank trustee Collard for all of her help and support and guidance last year. She did a great job as Vice Chair last year, and I'd like to say thank you so much. So this year has had challenges and opportunities. We have hired a new Director, an Associate Director, an Executive Officer of Human Resources, and a Superintendent, and there may be more hirings coming up. I'm not sure which category those are, a challenge or an opportunity. We've had labor negotiations and sanctions, and throughout it all, we have maintained the good relationships within our board. That is one of our strengths. And I would like to thank everyone around who has been involved in those processes for all of your hard work and efforts. You have started our program, we have started our Program Viability Consultation, which will allow us to continue to maintain our outstanding curriculum and initiatives in all our schools and classrooms across Halton, including programming for student success for both the English and French tracks. I'm looking forward to this upcoming year with some excitement as we will be creating a new five-year, multi-year plan for the board. This will be our opportunity to look forward to the 22nd century and make sure we are preparing our students and staff with the tools and opportunities that they need. I don't believe we're preparing for the 21st century. You can't say that anymore. That's where we're living. We need to go beyond. That's why I believe we are actually going to be preparing them for the 22nd. As you know, by nature, I'm an optimist, and I know many of you are as well. Collectively, we have the ability to affect change, to showcase excellence, and to promote public education. And that's why we are all here, to support Halton's students and their achievements and successes. We still have some tough decisions to make, but by working collaboratively with each other to seek out information and find the best possible solutions, and by working with our senior staff to create new goals in our multi-year plan and the annual operational plans, by engaging our parent communities and working with our provincial and municipal partners, I believe we have the collective knowledge, diverse opinions, perspectives that can only bring, help this board grow stronger, and to continue its position as a leader in the province. There will still be issues we're advocating for and preparing for, such as new schools, increased enrollments, renewal, the funding formula, and closing the gap. But our strength in facing these issues is working collaboratively as a team by respecting our different viewpoints and perspectives, and ultimately making decisions that benefit the students. As you know, the Halton District School Board is committed to every student. I believe this board, in the past, has demonstrated that. I know I have heard from within the board, the community, and the province that the Halton District School Board now has a different brand, or reputation, as you will, and that's a tribute to every single one of us. The Halton District School Board mission is, we will inspire and support learning, create safe, healthy, inclusive, and engaging environments, provide opportunities for challenge and choice, and prepare students for success. And I believe we are all walking the talk, and that makes a difference for all students. So as your Chair, my goal is to continue to be impartial, accessible, and collaborative. I will continue my commitment to communications, my respect for all my colleagues and the staff, and my promotion of public education in Halton. So a quote from Arnold Glasso, "Remember, success is simple. Do what's right, the right way, at the right time." I would like to thank you once again for your continued support. It's an honor and a privilege to be your Chair for this coming year. Thank you so much. Thank you. Would the Vice Chair like to share some remarks?
Just briefly, thanks. As you all know by now, the role of trustee is not an easy one. We've made some tough decisions over the past year, and we'll have tough decisions to make in the coming year. So I pledge to do my absolute best to support you, not just trustees, but staff, students, and parents as we make the best decisions for the students of our board. So to the trustees, thank you for your trust. I'm happy to serve you as Vice Chair for the next year. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Can I have a mover to destroy the ballots? Moved by trustee Papin, seconded by trustee Daniele. Is it on the controllers? Okay, so, has everyone signed in? Okay, you'll have to sign in here. Where is it, Gail? Just a minute. We'll play the Jeopardy music somewhere. It's have a little button here that plays it, right? Okay, it is now there, so I'm going to set it. So it was moved by, I can't remember. Trustee Papin and trustee Daniele, and all those in favor. Thank you. That passes unanimously. You may now shed the ballots. Okay, so we're now up to our delegation portion of the evening, and we have no delegations tonight, no presentations. So we will move to our minutes of the Halton District School Board meeting from November the 18th, 2015. Do I have a mover? Trustee Gerbence, seconded by trustee Reynolds. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none? A minute, I gotta find the right thing. Sorry, everything's a little bit out of order here. Okay, I got it. All those in favor? You can put your hands up. Thank you. Sure, we need for trustee Gerbence to finish already. That passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Okay, we are going to take a two-minute recess so we can do some reshifting so the trustee, the student trustees can come back up to their position.
Test one, two. Test one, two.
Anybody know where our missing Director is? I would like to thank both candidates for putting their name forward. And this year's Vice Chair is Kim Graves. Congratulations. This is my opportunity to make an inaugural address, and the Vice Chair will also get the opportunity, if she so desires. But first, I'd like to express my wholehearted appreciation and thanks to my colleagues for your continued success, or support. Sorry, can tell I'm... I would like to congratulate each and every one of you for what you have done in the past year, the first year of our term. We are a group of leaders, and we've all had opportunities through committees and here at the board table to demonstrate that. I would like to congratulate Vice Chair Graves on becoming Vice Chair. And I would really like to wholeheartedly thank trustee Collard for all of her help and support and guidance last year. She did a great job as Vice Chair last year, and I'd like to say thank you so much. So this year has had challenges and opportunities. We have hired a new Director, an Associate Director, an Executive Officer of Human Resources, and a Superintendent, and there may be more hirings coming up. I'm not sure which category those are, a challenge or an opportunity. We've had labor negotiations and sanctions, and throughout it all, we have maintained the good relationships within our board. That is one of our strengths. And I would like to thank everyone around who has been involved in those processes for all of your hard work and efforts. You have started our program, we have started our Program Viability Consultation, which will allow us to continue to maintain our outstanding curriculum and initiatives in all our schools and classrooms across Halton, including programming for student success for both the English and French tracks. I'm looking forward to this upcoming year with some excitement as we will be creating a new five-year, multi-year plan for the board. This will be our opportunity to look forward to the 22nd century and make sure we are preparing our students and staff with the tools and opportunities that they need. I don't believe we're preparing for the 21st century. You can't say that anymore. That's where we're living. We need to go beyond. That's why I believe we are actually going to be preparing them for the 22nd. As you know, by nature, I'm an optimist, and I know many of you are as well. Collectively, we have the ability to affect change, to showcase excellence, and to promote public education. And that's why we are all here, to support Halton's students and their achievements and successes. We still have some tough decisions to make, but by working collaboratively with each other to seek out information and find the best possible solutions, and by working with our senior staff to create new goals in our multi-year plan and the annual operational plans, by engaging our parent communities and working with our provincial and municipal partners, I believe we have the collective knowledge, diverse opinions, perspectives that can only bring, help this board grow stronger, and to continue its position as a leader in the province. There will still be issues we're advocating for and preparing for, such as new schools, increased enrollments, renewal, the funding formula, and closing the gap. But our strength in facing these issues is working collaboratively as a team by respecting our different viewpoints and perspectives, and ultimately making decisions that benefit the students. As you know, the Halton District School Board is committed to every student. I believe this board, in the past, has demonstrated that. I know I have heard from within the board, the community, and the province that the Halton District School Board now has a different brand, or reputation, as you will, and that's a tribute to every single one of us. The Halton District School Board mission is, we will inspire and support learning, create safe, healthy, inclusive, and engaging environments, provide opportunities for challenge and choice, and prepare students for success. And I believe we are all walking the talk, and that makes a difference for all students. So as your Chair, my goal is to continue to be impartial, accessible, and collaborative. I will continue my commitment to communications, my respect for all my colleagues and the staff, and my promotion of public education in Halton. So a quote from Arnold Glasso, "Remember, success is simple. Do what's right, the right way, at the right time." I would like to thank you once again for your continued support. It's an honor and a privilege to be your Chair for this coming year. Thank you so much.
Be it resolved that the board authorize the director to post internally and provincially an opening for two superintendents of education with responsibilities for school supervision and portfolio assignments as determined by the Director of Education, and that a hiring committee be established to review applications, conduct interviews, and do reference checks to provide counsel to the director in making a recommendation to the board. And I so move.
Thank you. Seconded by trustee Oliver. Is there any discussion on this topic tonight? Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amos. I would just like to comment on the reason for the vacancies. The first one is the appointment of Associate Director David Bog from superintendent position, who was our secondary program and a family and school superintendent, who's now the associate director, and of course, we've seen that. But the bit of the surprise one for the public here, and it's, as I've said earlier, it's certainly bittersweet for this board. Superintendent Trish Dyson, who has, I wouldn't say countless years of experience, but many, many years of experience, not just to the Halton District School Board, but to the Toronto District School Board, other school boards, and the Ministry of Education. As the public is well aware, our schools and our students perform very well on all achievement tests. The primary reason, the primary person behind that high achievement is the leadership of Trish Dyson. She has been instrumental in our program department in leading our staffs in helping our students achieve at the levels that they achieve at. And we know that she has done magnificent work in preparing those kids for their future high school years and subsequently their years beyond high school. It will be difficult for us to replace Tricia. Her expertise, her knowledge, and experience are second to none. And I mean that sincerely. It's second to none. We often, when we sit around as senior managers and senior administration, we sit in awe of her knowledge and her experience. So, as much as it's an opportunity for the HDSB to bring in another superintendent, it's also a gigantic loss for the HDSB as we lose Trish Dyson. It's also a gigantic happiness for Trish Dyson as she earns a very, very well-deserved retirement. And we, in senior management, wish her all the best, and we hope that she's not a stranger here. Thank you.
Now, we know Superintendent Dyson's not going to be leaving us until the end of January, so we'll get a chance to sing some of her accolades then. But while I'm very happy for Superintendent Dyson, I'm very sad for us as a board. Tricia has brought her knowledge. I've known her since she started because I was on the interviewing teams. And all I can say is she's been such an asset, and she's part of why we are one of the best boards in the province. And thank you so much for all that you have done for the students and staff of the system. And we will miss you. So, did we move that motion?
I moved it. Was there a seconded?
Yes.
Seconded? Okay, so we just have to vote now. Okay, so all those in favor. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. So you will be starting the process shortly. Okay, so the next item... Was there any other items? I'm a little discombobulated today. I feel out of sight. And everybody's moved around now, so it's trying to figure out where everybody is. Take a little bit to figure it out. Okay, so we're up to the order paper. So are there any comments or questions on our order paper tonight? Seeing none, we're up to our action items. So the first action item is the 2014-15 Financial Statements: Accumulated Surplus Balance. Superintendent Vierman, report 15153 on page 11 of your board package. Welcome, Superintendent Vierman.
Thank you. Through the chair. We did spend quite a bit of time at the last meeting discussing the results of the financial statements and the recommended motion. And at this time, may be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. So I'm going to put the recommendation on the floor, and then we can have any discussion if people have any comments or questions. The recommendation is be it resolved the Halton District School Board authorize the following transfers within accumulated surplus. Amounts internally restricted for future use by the board. Year-end rolls forward: $48,057 for decentralized school budgets; $980,706 for Center for Skills Development and Training; $1,201,888 for year-end roll forwards; Student Achievement: $190,008 Professional Development; $241,369 for Mental Health Strategy; $2 million for multi-year operational plan initiatives; Technology: $238,145 for technology upgrades; Accommodation: $1,018,740 for Closing the Gap Initiative; And $2,500,000 for future administrative facility. Wow, I got them all down. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the audited financial statements for the financial year ended August 31st, 2015. Moved by trustee Pappin, seconded by trustee Harvey Hope. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so the next item is... Thank you, Superintendent Vierman. Trustee Professional Development, trustees Collard and Daniele, report 15158 on page 52 of your board package. I was going to put it on the floor. Did you want to speak to it before I put it on the floor? I can't find the right page. That's my problem. Okay, I got it. Thank you. So I'm going to put this motion on the floor. Be it resolved the Halton District School Board use a portion of the reserve account for trustee professional development to cover the registration costs for the trustees to attend the Ontario Public School Board Association Public Education Symposium, including the pre-symposium, to be held January 28th to 30th, 2016, for a maximum of $7,700. Moved by trustee Daniele, seconded by trustee Gray. Discussion? Trust... Trustee Daniele.
Thank you. The motion is fairly self-explanatory. I believe this will be a very big year at the OPSPA Public Education Symposium. Yeah, why am I... Okay, no more buzzing. Good. Can you hear me? Okay. Just between the workshops on the wall, the audit committees, the student trustee workshop, and this year, what is unusual is normally the minister comes and speaks on Thursday evening. This time, she is incorporated into the pre-symposium. So there is... That's part of the paid part of the conference. I truly believe that the professional development you get at the OPSPA, particularly in this year, would be well worth the investment.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak to this motion? Okay, all... So, seeing no more speakers, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So our next motion is Policy Development and Review Policy Feedback. Director Miller, report 15150, page 53 of your board package.
Thank you, Chair Amos. As per board motion, this was posted for 25 days. Policy Development and Review Policy, and we had no responses.
So I'm going to put the motion on the table. Be it resolved the Halton District School Board approve the Policy Development and Review Policy as appended to report 15150. Moved by trustee Gray, seconded by trustee Gerbence. Is there any discussion on the Policy Development and Review Policy? Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is with respect to the 25 days/three consecutive board meetings. And I just wanted to confirm my understanding that these specified periods are minimums, that should there be a bigger issue or something that we want extended consultation on, that these could be extended through motion of the board.
Chair Amos, trustee L. Harrison, your interpretation's correct. These are a minimum, so it can be longer by board motion.
Thank you. Trustee Graves.
I just wanted to give kudos to former director Yuwali. Unfortunately, he was here a short time ago. He did a significant amount of work in this. So I just wanted to digitally now thank him for that work.
Thank you. And I know that he'll probably hear from maybe our current director that it's passed, and he'll be very happy. We'll wait till we vote. So... All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. A long time coming. Thank you. Thank you to everybody involved in all the hard work they did with this policy because it has been in the works for a long time. The next item is our Correspondence Polling Station Security, report 15161, page 59 of your board package. This was a motion that I had brought forward regarding... Because of a discussion that we'd had with the city of Burlington regarding the use of schools for hosting election polling stations. So I'm going to put the motion on the table. And if there's any discussion, we can go from there. Be it resolved the Halton District School Board direct the chair to write to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing regarding concerns relating to student and staff safety at schools that host election polling stations, and that the funding be provided for the provision of security guards at each school as is the practice for federal elections, and that a copy of this letter be shared with the Halton Catholic District School Board, the mayors and city clerks of Burlington, Oakville, Milton, and Halton Hills, the region of Halton, OPSPA, and local MTPs. Moved by trustee Oliver, seconded by trustee Pappin. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. So we're now up to our Evening Harley. The student trustee reports. Trustees Schneider and Sahai.
Good evening, everyone. So on November 24th, we had our second last Student Senate meeting of the year. And so what happened there is elementary students by themselves had a discussion on their positive initiatives in the school. So that was inspired by the trustee comments and questions during our board meeting and how you guys share ideas and learn from each other and do the positive things that are going on in your schools. So we did the same thing for our student senators so they can learn about the initiatives going on and maybe get inspired by some ideas and start that in their schools and talk to each other. So then we did breakout groups. So as we mentioned last time about our Student Voice Report Day, we're getting work done on that. So last time, we mentioned the sticky notes with all of the questions or the ideas about changes in educations or problems that they have in their schools. And we came up with main categories of more extracurriculars, technologies, facilities, teachers, student life, regards to safety and behavior, classroom issues, sports teams, bullying, et cetera. It's all found in our Student Senate minutes, which I sent a link out to all of you maybe like five minutes ago. That were... It was... Sorry. We just finalized it with our secretary. So we now have a Student Senate Minutes folder that we just set up today. So I... The link was sent out to you, and we'll put all of our minutes from our meetings, including the discussion points, on there. So you guys can read that. And we'll point out significant points in our updates if they're necessary. Let me know if you have any questions or comments about that.
We also began our planning, just sort of like an introduction during our last meeting, to the Halton Youth Leadership Symposium, which is the annual conference that the student senators run in our board. And so we just introduced the concept to our new student senators and just had like sort of like a light brainstorming session about what they wanted to have different in this year's leadership conference as opposed to previous years. And me and Sophie, we've been doing a bunch of talking. We've kind of decided that we want to focus this year more on the transitions involved in schools, so especially for the elementary students there, transition to high school, and then for high school students who are transitioning to different pathways, the secondary pathways. So we kind of introduced that topic there.
With our secondary student discussion, we talked about exams and summatives coming up. We know that's always a concern with a lot of secondary students. And we did something that I learned in law class and we do almost every day in law class, and that's a four corners debate. So we put a resolution on the floor, and then the students went to each corner, being strongly disagree, disagree, agree, strongly agree. And then they can move around the room depending on different points they make, and they can speak at any time. And so a point brought up was that they felt that different classes in the same semesters don't have similar study guides. Maybe some teachers give out more detailed ones for exams than others, and they were discussing that. And we had our superintendent Julie Hunt-Givens, who was very, very beneficial to us, who gave us some information points for our senate. Always good to keep them in the know. But with collaboration with us, we came to an idea to have for our meetings in the new year, to have a panel from assessment and evaluation for the students to ask questions regarding their exams and everything. And a panel would be really beneficial. And we told them to go back and during all their exams and everything, write down questions that they would have for that panel. And then they could collaborate on initiatives that they could go on with our senate collectively, like a position paper or something specific in their schools. So that's about it. Our next meeting, I believe, is when we have the French immersion consultation. So that will be on December... It's our last meeting of the year. It's from six...
Next Tuesday?
Yeah, next Tuesday. It's from 6:00 to 8:00. And that's the consultation. So, yes, that's about it.
The program viability.
I will be there.
Thank you so much for your report. Sounds like there's a lot of good things being initiated and discussed, and there's all kinds of learning going on. I believe there's a couple of comments... I believe there's a couple of comments or questions for you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, Student Trustees. That's an excellent, interesting update. And I just want to say I really like your new website. I find it quite easy to navigate. It's got all the good information on it, so thanks for doing that. I'm curious if you've thought of, or if you've ever done this, doing a joint meeting with the student senators from the Ceterminas Board, the Catholic Board.
For sure. I remember, that was actually an idea of my own when I was a senator in grade nine, coming from the Halton Catholic Board. So, yeah, I'm in excellent relations with their other student trustees. I know them very well. And we were talking about doing some sort of joint meeting or conference. It's in discussion, yes.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair. At the last Halton Eco-Learning Partnership Meeting, we were talking about the fact that there used to be a student representative at those meetings. So I wanted to seek your assistance, your advice, to identify whether there's an interest and whether there is a student that could participate in those meetings. They are... It's next Tuesday as well. Here, I believe it's 4:30 till 6:00. So it might be good for somebody to ease right into the next meeting.
We can put that information out there, and I'm sure there will be interests. We've heard students do eco-initiatives at their schools, so I'm sure one of them would be more than interested, and they can just go from your meeting to our meeting, so.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions for our student trustees? Seeing none, thank you very much for your report. And so your next meeting is next Tuesday at 6:00? 16:00, in this room. Thank you. Okay, so the next item is... Is there any notices of motion tonight? Seeing none? The... We have some action items for December the 16th. We have banking resolutions. Superintendent Verhman, report 15063. And I understand we need to waive the rules to deal with that tonight because of the signature. Is that correct?
That's correct. Through the Chair, this is a report that's presented every year this time. It's based on requirements of the Education Act with respect to signing authorities for our banking transactions. The details are included in the various appendices attached to the report, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Yes, I'd like to move that we waive the rules to deal with this matter tonight.
Thank you. I have a mover to waive the rules. Do I have a seconder? Trustee Pappen. Is there any discussion on waiving the rules? Did you want to discuss waiving the rules? Okay, Trustee Harvey Hope.
Just a quick comment. May I suggest in previous years, since we know this is always a problem and always needs to be waived, that perhaps it could be on the package that we, like, just go through our normal channels and just have it for no discussion on the one before, so that we don't have to waive the rules every year? And we know it has to come up every year, and we've already discussed the credit amounted audit committee, and so that piece of it that may or may not change has already been nailed down long before November the 18th.
Just a suggestion. So we can take it under advisement. Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor of waiving the rules to deal with this tonight? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Did you wish to speak to the actual motion before I put it on the floor? So I'm going to put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board approved the Banking Resolution Authority to Sign Appendix 1, and Banking Resolution Current Expectations Appendix 2, Banking Resolution Education Development Charge Appendix 3, and Banking Resolution Familiar Signatures on Checks Appendix 4. Moved by: Trustee Gray, seconded by Trustee Oliver. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Superintendent Verhman. The next item is the Ombudsman. Trustee Collard, report 15167 on page 67 of your board package. Trustee Collard.
Thank you. At the September OPSPA Board of Directors meeting, the Acting Ombudsman for Ontario came and spoke with us about the role of the ombudsman as it would pertain to school boards. And it became clear to trustees around the table that we needed to modify our internal processes in our boards to deal with complaints that were coming from a third party, because we don't have these in our policies and our procedures. And it further became a concern that there was no place in the process from the ombudsman that would ensure that trustees would be made aware of complaints in any way, shape, or form. And that's because it's beyond the role of the ombudsman to tell boards how to conduct their business internally. So that would be something that would be for discussion at our board, whether or not we wanted to have some kind of reporting, whether or not it would be just a basic report saying we had four complaints, and they were resolved, or whether we had further information than that, categories perhaps, whatever the case may be. There is no process for us as a board... And when I speak of the board, I don't mean of the Board of Trustees. I mean the Halton District School Board to deal with complaints coming from the ombudsman.
Thank you. Is there any comments or questions regarding this topic tonight? It will be coming back at our next board meeting. Seeing none? We will have some more discussion then on December the 16th. Thank you. Our next item, our information items, report. Sorry. Oh, okay, she popped in after I looked then. Sorry, okay, I'll back up a step. Trustee L. Harrison would like to speak to the previous discussion around the ombudsman, right?
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair, my question is just with respect to a statement downwards in the report that speaks to an alignment between our existing process for public concerns. And so I'm wondering whether there's a way to incorporate and have one policy for all of our public concerns that could logically also encompass this, and if so, whether that piece would need to be reflected back up in the recommendation, which just appears to read that we would be doing a standalone policy. So I just was wondering about the alignment of those two things. Thanks.
It doesn't preclude us from amending a current procedure. It is... It doesn't say that it has to be new in the motion. So it could... And it does say in the body of the report that it could be amending the current procedure.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on this, on the ombudsman motion? Okay, thank you. So we're now up to our information items. The 2015-16 LTAP School Boundary Reviews. Superintendent E. Toth, who is not here, so I see Mr. Renzella at the podium, and report 15165 on page 68 of your board package. Welcome, Mr. Renzella.
Thank you. The report before you this evening just outlines information regarding school boundary reviews. And as our 2014-2015 LTAP identified, that we will be undertaking a boundary review for September 2016 for the Martin Street Boundary Review. And that is still moving forward. The LTAP also identified boundary issues or concerns. One of them is the Tom Thompson Public School, where although the enrollments appear to be within the OTG and portable capacity, it... We had concerns that because of class organizations and distribution, that we were exceeding total capacity for moving forward. Based on our existing school orgs, the principal has been able to accommodate the students, and we did not need any additional portables on site. And moving forward, it would appear again that we will not pierce the maximum number of portables at the school moving forward. And so we recognize that we were not going to be undertaking a school boundary review. And also, again, we shouldn't be taking a review, given the fact that it's a bit premature with, given the program viability outcomes that may result in some major boundary revisions moving forward. And so we felt that we would just kind of monitor it and wait until that comes out before we do anything in addition to that. The other area of concern or other school is WH Morton. Again, is projected to exceed its on-the-ground and portable capacity by next year. Board staff are reviewing various constraints and opportunities of placing additional portables on the site, as well as reviewing some potential expansion of the... Or expansion of the gifted program to other schools to provide longer-term accommodation relief to WH Morton. Be glad to answer any other questions. Thank you.
And I believe you do have a few questions tonight. Trustee Gervance.
Through you, Chair. There is... In front of the City of Burlington, actually, there is a possible development in Alton Village, and which may result in quite a large number of residences. And I was wondering, if that goes through, will be... Will we be... Will that trigger a boundary review?
At this point in time, it's an application made by the developer. It has no status. It has not been approved by the City of Burlington. So we have not included that as in any of our projections. However, we will assess it in the context, once it has been circulated to us in terms of future needs. Currently, that area would attend Alton Village Public School. And as trustees are aware, we did receive a five-room addition at the school. So we'll have to balance that out as part of the LTAP projections moving forward. So at this point in time, we... And again, and in reference to that particular development, it's high density. We typically do not get a lot of students from high-density development as well, so. But we will have to assess it, because it's just kind of starting the process. There's going to be ongoing discussions, negotiations between the city, the residents, and the developer in terms of this application. So, you know, we can't say right now what the eventual impact is going to be.
Thank you. I have been getting questions from the community. That's why I ask.
I believe Director Miller would like to respond to...
Through Chair Amos, to Trustee Gervance and all trustees. Actually, that's the comment I was going to make, that some of you might be getting questions from the community. I've had a few as well. I've mostly referred them to Senior Manager Renzella, but I've essentially given the same answer that he said tonight. It's, we're kind of in a wait-and-see before we can do anything. But if you do get them, you can answer it that way, or you can refer them to us. That's okay.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Yes, with respect to WH Morton, you speak of the gifted placement, which is governed by IPRC and places those students into that placement for their appropriate education to other schools. And I'm wondering what involvement special education, student services will have in that potential expansion or move? And if we're looking at putting grades one to eight in one facility, which would probably be best for students who don't deal very well with transition?
I'm going to defer to Superintendent Zahnoffel, because Superintendent Zahnoffel has been actively involved in this issue, and he can speak to it in greater detail.
Superintendent Zahnoffel.
Through the Chair, to trustees, we have been quite active on this and actually bringing a report to the next board meeting. Just to say briefly that we're very conscious of the program viability work that's going... That you're all aware of, and the need for those decisions to be made because of the long-term impacts. So we will... The report that's coming next week will be a shorter-term solution, looking for stability and obviously, for sure, maintaining good quality programming for those students. But longer-term decisions such as a one-to-eight type of setting for that placement will hold on until the PVC work is done, with an eye moving forward with that after that.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Through the Chair. I would like to speak to the part of the warrant that speaks to Tom Thompson Public School, please. So I know the Tom Thompson School community will be grateful and relieved to know that the board is closely monitoring the school population closely. And while I respect and support the recommendation to wait to the program viability results are in before making a boundary review, I do remain very concerned that, given candidates on the cusp of receiving the largest mass immigration of refugees since 1980, and we know that applications have been accepted in Burlington, and we know where they are located. And we also know that Syrian refugees do have French in their language skillset, that we may need to rethink this. And I would just like to know whether that consideration of our Syrian refugees coming to Burlington would have any impact on this particular motion.
Director Miller.
I... At this point in time, I'm... We have not identified whether or not where and how many Syrian refugees will be attending our schools in Halton. And in terms of the impact, I couldn't say at this point in time. And particularly the impact on Tom Thompson.
I would just... Sorry. Through your Chair Amos, to Trustee Reynolds. Yeah, we still have very little information around the Syrian refugees. I know that we had some information from the federal government through P-code that I will be sharing with trustees, that currently there's five students privately sponsored in Burlington. But I don't even know where they're located in Burlington yet. So this is very much a situation in flux. And I would have to... I would suggest that we will have to consider many, many options depending on what happens and where these refugees end up being located. So we can never say never, because if they get located right beside a super crowded school, we'll have to sit down and problem-solve that for sure, so.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison. Oh, sorry. I just got bumped. Because she... Because I hadn't refreshed it before Tracy actually. Okay, Trustee L. Harrison.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So I would like to speak to the portion of the report related to Morton. And as you know, the grade five gifted cohort is split this year. So they're at two separate schools because of... So they're at two separate schools because of the infrastructure constraints at Morton. So that in itself is not an ideal scenario for, as trustee Collard pointed out, a vulnerable group of students. And, and what I heard was that this solution would be a short, short-term one pending the outcome of program viability and, and other things. You know, there's, there's a lot of accommodation things swirling, as you know, in southwest Oakville. We have Pine Grove, which is filled to the rafters and then some, and dare I say, our school property in Lake Shore Woods. So I think that it's absolutely critical that all of these things be considered as a whole package. And that, I guess, at the heart of it are our students and what's going to be best, best for them. So I know that our community is highly interested and watching and waiting. So I look forward to the report that comes and to hearing what staff's best recommendation is at this point. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. I just had a question about, this was, this report was based up for possible school boundary reviews. And I was wondering about the schools that a boundary review isn't necessarily the solution, but they are also overcrowded. Because I'm aware of a couple of schools that, you know, five or six more students will tip over the, there's nowhere to configure, like they're, they're, they're at the point where they can't add a class. And they can't add a portable. And, you know, yes, maybe we're beyond the class cap for October 31st. Perhaps that will be okay until June, and the problem won't show up until September when all those kids move up a grade. But I'm just wondering, I know we had talked about moving the date back for the LTAP update, and I wondered, like, from March to, and I'm wondering when that, the rest, the LTAP update for 2015-16 is. This is the boundary review sort of heads up, but wondering what the other, the projections, when we're expecting those.
As we have done over the last couple of years, have introduced the LTAP in probably March, April, early April, mainly to take advantage of our final staffing projections to be used as part of our projections. Staff are kind of working on all that at this point in time. So we have the most accurate and update, updated or information so that when we do our projections, moving forward and to ensure that we, you know, we're always kind of, you know, concerned about our accuracy. So that's what we'll, we'll, I think, monitor the same process as we've done before. In terms of having it any earlier, I, you know, as I said, I think, you know, the big question that's going to play a role into this year's LTAP, or may not have an impact this year, is the, the recommendations that are approved by the board in June or May, late May, June regarding the program viability review and, which may have an impact moving forward.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions for Mr. Renzella tonight on this topic? Seeing none? Thank you very much, Mr. Renzella. Our next item is the Craig Kilbacher Secondary School renovation. Superintendent Cullen, report 15164 on page 69 of your board package. Welcome, Superintendent Cullen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This report is a little earlier than normal in this process, but we're trying to accelerate the timelines as quickly as we can at this point in the process. We generally like to check back in with the board that the architects have done their preliminary review of the site and the local restrictions on building code bylaw, et cetera. It is simply a sketch plan so that there are no surprises later down the road when we stick the addition on the roof or beside the building and everybody says, oh, that's not where I thought it was going. So it does cover off both the capacity change that was approved by the ministry and the greenhouse, which is an additional room. So there were 210 pupil places in 10 rooms approved by the ministry. The board had, prior to that date, approved the greenhouse, which is loaded at another 21 students for a grand total of 231, which is on the summary sheet of the room count attached. The addition location that's been proposed came about as a result of site meetings with the superintendent, the principal, and the architect on site, as well as our staff. It does reuse the existing stairwells, which is advantageous. So it is a link that sort of goes from the existing stairwell out of the building, back around, and comes back in, thus creating a courtyard space to ensure that all of the rooms involved have natural light into them, both on the ground and second-floor areas. The current location of the greenhouse, I'm going to say, is still up for some discussion about whether it sits at one end of the addition or the other. There are some reasons for it doing one or the other. One is an aesthetic one, the other one might be functionality. But we will be working on those while the site plan is being reviewed by the town. We'll have several months, actually, to play with much more detail on the actual design while the town is reviewing the site plan implications. There will be washrooms and parking required as a result of the addition, so they'll be incorporated into the project. So at this point, be happy to take any questions related to the process or the project specifically. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to Superintendent Cullen. I had a question about, normally we would get an elevation drawing. I'm not sure, as you say, maybe it's too, it's earlier than usual, so therefore it may be. But I'm just trying to picture sort of what this hallway courtyard kind of thing is going to look like. And I wondered, I proposed that a sketch plan would somewhere be in the works. And then the other question is, I know when we were, I was there for the open house way back when, one of the students commented how they wished they could get out of the cafeteria into what is now going to be a courtyard, and wondered whether or not that was thought of or, or could be incorporated into the plan in that it seemed to me at the time that there was, that would be a natural exit. And at the time, it was like they thought maybe the greenhouse would get sort of added sort of in that corner at some point. But anyway, just those are the two comments that I had.
And if I may, through the chair to the first, yes, there will be an elevation created. There just wasn't time to do so in the turnaround we had on this particular plan. There'll be a full set of drawings, of course, as part of the formal building process. The use of the courtyard in conjunction with the rest of the school, we are talking about it as a result of both the greenhouse function as well as the cafeteria. Students are consistently, are constantly looking for more crushed space, congregating space where they can go to, so that will hopefully lead to some of that. Currently, they can't exit immediately adjacent to the cafeteria. This will have an exit in that same area, so there will be a collective link, if you will, between those. The real feature on this one at the moment seems to be focusing more on the entrance. So if you're familiar with the way they enter the building, the front of the school actually faces the back of the property. This would put more emphasis on that entrance than the current configuration. It would give it a sort of a facing the main primary parking lot area and do a little bit around that. So that was, that was part of the functionality that had been talked about, using it as an enhancement feature to the addition as well, or to the entranceway.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. This is one of the first processes like this that I have been through. So reflecting on our mission to inspire and support learning, my question is, is there any involvement or student voice that factors into the unique opportunities of this particular school? So either student voice and/or parent council voice. I note that, you know, there's meetings with staff, but as the regular users that we're trying to inspire, I just wonder whether there is or whether there's opportunity for that kind of thing. Thanks.
Certainly. If I may, through the chair, and I think I'll turn it over to the superintendent as well. At this stage, what we attempt to do is address the issues that are going to be requirements. So when the town has an approval process that says it has to be a certain distance from the existing building, or it has to have a certain fire rating, or it has to have exits and those types of things, we don't want to go to a public consultation process and give people false hope that anything is possible. So this narrows the box enough to say that this is a functional, doable model. Consultation comes into how it works in the, I'll say, more to the interior elements and how it flows internally. So all of that space now within has some element of flexibility around how it gets used and what it is. We've already talked about the need for a biology lab along with the mix because of the program selections that students have made to date. There's ample opportunity to do both the public part and the student part at the school level. And I'm going to turn things over to Superintendent Newman.
And through the chair, last week when we met with the staff at Craig Kilbacher, they had already consulted with the students and had taken some of their input. Particularly, they want more chill spaces. So the courtyard offers some chill space, places where kids can learn outside of a classroom, hang, if you like, while they do their networking, learning. And in many ways, this plan offers a lot of light, which the students really advocated that they liked the glass and the light features of that as well. So students very much, Donna Taylor very much runs a school that is student voice-centered, and very much, they are very much part of the program, particularly the green, green space and the greenhouse. So they really want to take a look at what green spaces outside the school could be incorporated as well. So they're looking at it in a big picture. You're welcome.
Thank you. Trustee Graves.
And to follow on trustee L. Harrison's point, those were excellent points that were raised. We had a family of schools meeting in Milton on Monday night, and I did share the plans with that group, and also online as well through social media with the community, so they're aware of what the plans look like. And we'll have that opportunity to, to give some feedback. Through your chair to Superintendent Cullen, I wanted to thank you for making the arrangements to speed this along. As you know, this extension is much needed in, in this community. So I very much appreciate that. And I really like the design. When I imagined it, I mean, I was at the council meeting at Craig Kilbacher, and we were discussing this. And we sort of suspected where the extension would go, and I pictured it coming out at a 90-degree angle from, from the school. And this is why I'm not an architect. I think the, the design that's in the plans there, it's, it looks, I think it's going to be beautiful. It's going to complement the school very nicely, and I love the courtyard. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. I like the incorporation of the, and the discussion around incorporating light into the school and open spaces and the courtyard and the greenhouse. That sounds terrific to me. If I'm looking correctly at the, the two tables that compare the current loading and the proposed loading, and just even scanning by category, I see some modest increases or gains in all of the areas except for music and arts. And I wonder why that is.
Through the chair, part of the process that we go through with a combination of both planning and at the school level is the current credit allocations and credit counts. So we took a look at the actual sections that are offered in those areas. It's sometimes difficult to know what students might have taken, had something in addition to that been available, but you're looking for vacancies in those. So if there, if all of the sections haven't occupied all of the available spaces to provide that, the assumption is that there weren't additional students looking for those program areas. The one that did come up was the biology one. So the need for one of the specialty labs to be enhanced. So when you're adding about 10 classrooms to a current mix of about 30, so it's about, you know, another, it's going to become 25% of the school, looking back to the specialty rooms, and that's one of the issues that has created some concern at this particular school. It has a high ratio already of specialty rooms because it was the replacement of school for EC jury and had a very high vocational element there. So a lot of shops, the life skills, the spec ed, all, I'll say lightly loaded by comparison to a standard classroom. So what the school was really missing was classroom spaces. That was, that was the real shortfall in the mix. So this really balances out the mix. And again, one of the labs is there, and of course, the greenhouse presents that other sort of activity-based area as well.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Yes, thank you, through the chair. Just a question, could you elaborate a little bit on the size of the courtyard? I know that it's a very trendy thing and very a positive trendy thing for schools to incorporate outdoor classrooms. I'm wondering if that courtyard would be of a size enough to facilitate that as a learning center for students?
Certainly. Again, through the chair, if you look at the drawings, as much as they're preliminary at this point and conceptual, they are still to scale in regard to where the two stairwells are located. So if you look at the two tie-in points to the existing building, there's a stairwell at each of those locations, and part of the objective or the creativity around the design is to be able to span the new addition from one stairwell to the other, so you don't have to create another one. So back to trustee Graves' comment about it coming out perpendicular to the building, we would have needed to create and build a new stairwell tower at the end of that two-story addition. In this fashion, you don't have to do that. So what this has created is virtually a linear addition to the building, stairwell to stairwell. And if you look at the scale of the classrooms versus the courtyard, I would anticipate that the courtyard is at least the size of two to three classrooms at this point. So certain parts of the courtyard will be functional in nature. I suspect that the greenhouse will want to do some of their hard landscaping, patio stones, fountains, those types of things as part of the program piece, which could be incorporated into a learning space as well. But I suspect they'd want to have a separate learning space that wasn't also active during the day with student exercise for, for doing those types of things. So I would say at this point in time, it's, it looks like it's at least the equivalent to two to two and a half classrooms of floor area.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this topic tonight? Seeing none, thank you very much, Superintendent Cullen, for your information on the Craig Kilbacher addition. Our next item is committee reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight?
The Joint Health and Safety Committee met two weeks ago. I wasn't able to attend, but the minutes from the meeting before that had just been passed have all been circulated to the trustees, as is the requirement. So I do suggest that you read those for the September meeting. And the November meeting minutes will be available, I believe there's, after the next meeting when they're approved. So just to keep an eye on them, you'll notice, it's interesting to read the trends of the things that are discussed and the things that drop off. They have standing items and they don't. And the other thing is that I try to incorporate the Joint Health and Safety Committee meeting with the Staff Wellness Committee and seeing the things that show up on both sides. And that was one of the reasons why I enjoyed being on both this past year, because you could see certain themes that were popping up, both on the, the, on both sides of the table, so to speak. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. Last week, Program and Accommodation Committee met, and trustees had an information education session on student discipline. And we've invited Superintendent Podra Berak and Assistant Principal Jonathan Shaw to, to continue that training with respect to suspensions and expulsions and that sort of thing. We've also made a list of topics for consideration for upcoming meetings in the new year. Thank you. Thank you. Trustee, oh, was that, yeah. Trustee Pappen. Sorry, you guys are changing sides. I find out where you are.
Thank you. The Accessibility Coordinating Committee met on November 19th. We discussed accommodation for employees with hearing needs and reviewed some of the next steps for following through on making these accommodations within the workplace. The minutes of the meeting will be sent to all the trustees. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Yes, I'd like to report on the meeting of the OSPO Board of Directors from last Friday and Saturday. We had a really informative presentation from Erwin Elman. He's the Provincial Advocate for Children and Youth, and spoke to us about the work of his office. And- And it was just, it was so heart-wrenching to hear some of the stories that he shared with us, but also gave a little bit of hope and promise that the work of his office is improving the lives of children and youth throughout Ontario. And so it was a really good session. We also had all of the normal labor updates and you're all aware of where we're sitting currently in terms of ratifying contracts with our unions. Things are starting to, it's starting to look like we're coming to the end of contract negotiations centrally and that parties are walking away feeling good about the deals that are being struck. So this is, this is all positive information. Also, SEAC met last night and we had the director come and speak with us about Program Viability Committee and the work going forward and the input that will be needed from SEAC in order to ensure that all students are included in the thinking going forward for program viability. And they also decided to form a subcommittee to complete the work of the Special Education Plan Review. And I think that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. I would just like to give a little update from the Center for Skills Development and Training. Just a reminder to trustees that, as you know, their main business is job search and language assistance. And they had attended last night City of Burlington Town Hall meeting on welcoming Syrian refugees and had offered their name to, as an opportunity of assistance to the Syrian refugees. And they wanted me to share that part of their offering is to strengthening referral relationships with non-traditional settlement services to create multiple client pathways that will meet the demand. As you know, the effort to settle and acclimatize clients of this group can't be done in isolation. And the settlement of needs of refugees will extend beyond housing, language assistance, and employment. They'll need health services regarding trauma and mental health amongst other services. And the Center for Skills Development and Training is poised to help out in that regard.
Thank you. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much. I think this is a, I think this is our first meeting since the PIC meeting that we had, that we told the representatives from all the schools. And I just want to say kudos to Superintendent Tina Samini and her assistant Joanne Bassett. It was a really good night. I love the way that we were set up in tables for our own schools so that we were working together collectively with the schools from our own constituency. It was a really, really good evening, a very positive evening, and I heard a lot of positive feedback about it.
Thank you. Trustee Graves.
Thank you. A reminder that, I believe it's next week already, policy and bylaw and governance. The major, a major item on the agenda will be the return of the power policy, Program and Accommodation Review Policy. So we will be inviting Mr. Renzella back to speak to us about that.
Thank you. Trustee Al Harrison.
Thank you. So I wanted to give everyone an update regarding the recognition program. And through our student trustees, there were a number of name suggestions for that program, HDSP Inspire Award, HDSP Impact Award, and HDSP Citizenship Award, to which we would also add me to HDSP, sort of channeling me to we there. So as we move forward to, that report is now posted for comment. And as we move forward to hear those comments and hopefully to implement that program in the new year, I just wanted to give a heads up that we will be giving some thought to collecting, reaching out and seeking names perhaps more broadly and then landing on something so we can quote unquote, you know, brand or communicate about that program efficiently. So we'll have some email communication about that in the near future. Thanks.
Thank you. Could you share those names with all trustees so we can see them? That's great. Thank you. Is there any other committee reports tonight? Seeing none, it's the Director's Report. Director Miller.
Thank you Chair Amos. I've got a few items tonight. The first one, and I'm going to refer to trustee Dyson to elaborate, but all our, I mean, well, she's retired, maybe she'll run for trustee in Jan. Superintendent Dyson, as of today, we have completed the training for all teachers around the phys ed and sex ed curriculum. So if Superintendent Dyson wants to elaborate.
I've been called many things and I consider it an honor to be referred to as a trustee. So thank you Director Miller. We actually finished the training today. We've, we've trained a representative, one or two representatives from all of our elementary schools, repeated the session three times, half-day session each time. So we feel that our teachers are ready to hit the ground running. As can be expected, there were lots of questions, but we modeled it after one of the strategies they need to be using in their classrooms. What is their awareness of their community and the community needs and how to respond in working with the principal to parent concerns? So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but I think we're set and our teachers are ready to go.
Thank you Superintendent Dyson. The other one is trustee Collard mentioned, I spoke at SEAC last night or the information session around the Program Viability Committee. We will be returning to, I had lots of great questions last night. We will be returning to get feedback from SEAC in the February meeting. Tomorrow, we will be posting the Phase Two of Program Viability Committee, which is the dates, how we're getting feedback, et cetera. And at that time, we won't publish who the private firm is, but we soon will be publishing who the private firm is, who will be running our focus groups, et cetera. So that'll go out tomorrow. Also, that committee, the Program Viability Committee was associated, was chaired by me, the Associate Director, and it will continue to be chaired by the Associate Director. So David Boge will be assuming the chairship of, or chairmanship of the Program Viability Committee. I, of course, will still be involved, but we think that's the most prudent action at the moment. The third item I have for public is, last week, we had a very good meeting with some local Islamic leaders. And I thank trustees because next week, we will be doing some, one of the action items that came out of that meeting was that we would have some education and some tutorial, I guess, seminar on Islam and some of the challenges that they're facing. And I applaud trustees for so readily embracing that, and we will be doing that next week sometime. So that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you Director Miller. Okay, we're now up to communications from the chair and I've got a few things. First, I'd like to acknowledge that this is the first meeting for our new Associate Director, Boge. Welcome as Associate Director. I don't know if you'll find the job different from that perspective than from over there, but, well, welcome and we're happy to have you. I'd also like to acknowledge, even though he's left, that this was the last meeting for Acting Executive Officer of Human Resources, Jeff Blackwell. And to thank him very much for all of his efforts on our, on his behalf and coming out of retirement to help fill a gap in the human resources. And he's done a fantastic job, especially in the times with all the labor negotiations going on. So thank you Jeff, if you're watching. I also like to mention that tomorrow, there's a meeting in Oakville regarding the Syrian refugees. And I was originally the only one invited and I mentioned I thought the other Oakville trustees should be there. So they are now all on the attendance list and will be attending as well. I believe there is going to be a staff person there as well. So it'll be an interesting meeting because there's going to be all kinds of different community groups as well. The other items I have is the Vice Chair and I will have to look at the striking report, but it's not quite ready yet because senior admin hasn't quite finished looking at all the different committees and their, the makeup. And so I need to get that information back. That far away, okay. It's not there though. And so as soon as that happens, the Vice Chair and I will get it out to all of you. And so my hope is that it will get out to all of you. And next Wednesday could be a very busy day because the first hour could be with our Muslim leaders. The second hour will either be PBNG or a bit of a discussion around the Striking Committee if we feel it's a need, and then the rest would be PBNG. So it'll be a very busy night. And last but not least, we will be having SO interviews. And if you're interested in attending, please email me. Again, we will go through the process of those who haven't been part of the process will, will get a higher priority than those who haven't already done the process, and we will pick geographically. So I believe Director Miller earlier this week sent out the timelines, but I don't have them here, but.
I got them in my head.
Well, the Director will share the timelines.
Yes, the ad goes out for two superintendent positions tomorrow. It closes December 17th. Shortlisting will be December 21st. Interviews will occur January 7th and 8th. And the intent is, and I always say intent at this point because you don't know, but in between then and January 20th, there'll be reference checks, et cetera. And it will go to the board for approval January 20th. And the expected starting date for the superintendents would be February 1st.
Okay, so if you're interested, please send me an email. And, okay, are those two people in response to my report? Okay, so one is and one isn't. Okay, so trustee Harvey Hope.
Thanks. I note that you had sent out a letter that would be quote communications to the Chair. And I'm about the truth and reconciliation letter for the minister. And so I'll say two things. One, I'd like that letter somehow to make it into the public realm. And two, also to have a conversation at some point in PBNG about having a place for those letters to make it into the public realm. But I forgot, it didn't quite seem to work in the noticed emotion, but I was, I basically want a noticed emotion to say, please can we, you know, approve having that letter made public? So I don't know how to, exactly how to do that, but I thought there was content and information other than just a thank you for your letter in that letter, and therefore I thought it would be useful information for the public as a whole. And also just in the history of making sure we can go back to that letter, if somebody asks what are they doing about what we asked them to do, it sort of lists it and we can hold them accountable.
I have no problem. Maybe it could be incorporated in the next board packages, communications to the Chair and to the, to the board. So the letter she was referring to was in response to the letter that was written regarding the truth and reconciliation and our support of the, having more programs within schools. And, okay, so, no Andrea, she wants to go on the next thing, I think. All right, so now we're up to trustee questions and comments, which Andrea would like, sorry, trustee events would like to, go ahead.
So last night, I attended the Syria Action Burlington meeting at Mainway Arena along with trustee Reynolds and trustee Pappen. And as well, Mary Jane Farish was there and Superintendent Robert Etoff. And it was extremely well-attended, standing room only. I was inspired by the city, the citizens and groups within Burlington who are stepping up to greet and, and take on Syrian refugees. A number of them said that they're willing to take them into their homes and also volunteer to help with translation and all sorts of different related activities. So I, I just wanted to, to say that it was a great experience.
Thank you for sharing that. Trustee Gray.
Yes, thank you through the chair. Just want to report that the School Community Council of Halton Hills, aka the Super Council of Halton Hills, met last week. The meeting was well attended, attended, and there was, during the meeting, the agenda featured a review of the goals of the organization, mostly through a brainstorming session, the possible topics to focus on over the next three meetings. And there was an informative presentation made by Cheryl Desboth, the public health nurse, on the role and resources available to parents. And so we've kicked this council off to a great start and we look forward to our next meeting in January. I also wanted to report special thanks to Director Miller, Chair Amos, Superintendent Scott Podra Berak, and Dominic Renzella from the Planning Department for recently, as recent as yesterday actually, visiting Halton Hills to the city center to review the Vision Georgetown, which is a new development planned, not yet approved apparently, but planned for the next, say, 10 to 15 years, which will bring about 19,000 more people into the Georgetown area, requiring five additional elementary schools and two secondary schools, three public elementary, one public secondary. So it's a really exciting time for Halton Hills, but all of this is just very much in the planning stages. And it was great to have our board in contact with the folks from the Planning Department of Halton Hills as we get ready to begin further discussions about the educational needs, well, or the building needs, I guess, in that new development. So thank you very much.
Thank you trustee Gray. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much. I just also wanted to speak to the, what's interesting is we pull all the Milton schools together for our family schools meeting. We had that the other day and it was really well-attended and a lot of, lot of tough questions around the Program Viability Committee, but also around accommodation and school builds and things like that. So we're hoping at a future meeting perhaps to have Superintendent Cullen join us for discussions on, on how we do our additions, our boundary reviews, things like that. But one of the highlights for me, and I have to say an absolute kudos to my Milton colleague because she's come up with a brilliant idea. She's, there's a website being created for all the Milton schools and their parent councils that they will be able to update on their own. And it looks really amazing and I know she's put a lot of work into it and it was very enthusiastically received, so well done to you Kim. Just a reminder of a couple of things as well. We have the Martin Street walk-through tomorrow night. For anybody who's interested, it's a goodbye to Martin Street because the kids will be moved out. As you know, we are going to be rebuilding it. And then the other thing that anybody might be interested in, I know student council is an awesome thing and I wish I could be there next Tuesday, but if you can't make student council and you're looking for something, I am a judge at the first Halton District School Board Spoken Words Slam competition on Tuesday, December 8th at the Welcome Center if anyone is interested. Okay, Sophie's joining me, so Joe Van's going to help cover for FOS himself. Pardon, I believe it's at 6:00. I can get that for you and send that out too if you like, because I think it's going to be, it's going to be at the Welcome Center in Milton, I believe. So I will send the details out and I'm looking forward to seeing it. Yeah, it's going to be great.
Thank you. That sounds exciting. Trustee Al Harrison.
Thank you very much. So I just wanted to update people on my monitoring of the Halton Active Transportation Hub. I've read recently a message from Metrolinks that says they are considering procuring someone to research and write a document highlighting curriculum connections, resources. to research and write a document highlighting curriculum connections, resources, and programming that could support teachers bringing active transportation into the classroom slash school day. So I can forward that email on, and we'll certainly continue to monitor what's going on in that regard. I wanted to give a big shout-out to TA Blake Lock artists. A number of them are featured today at the Youth Arts Program at Queens Park and their awesome work and sharing their ideas and imagination through, through art and building community in doing so. We had our Family of School Meeting last week. Thanks to Superintendent Trufin for attending. We had all of our elementary school councils in attendance, as well as some of the administrators, which was great. There are so many good things happening in our local schools. From breakfast with Santa, during which time I flipped what seemed like a million pancakes. Chapters Nights that raised thousands for schools in both money and donations of books. And one that I'd like to particularly highlight is a Community Healthy Snacks Evening hosted by Oakwood last week, where over half of their school community participated. So congratulations to them. And, and lastly, with respect to our, our group Family of School Meetings, people are looking for opportunities to collaborate together across the community, and one of the ideas that came up was a Spring Cut-a-thon. So that is a hair-cutting event for donation to making wigs for those who are going through cancer treatment. So I hope that takes off. We're hoping that Blake Lock will host, and I'm in and, and growing like crazy. So we'll see how that goes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. I was just going to remind trustees, tomorrow, the Burlington Calling Through All Three-Year-Olds Meeting is happening. I'll be in attendance, and it's at Mohawk Gardens on Spruce at 6:30. And I know that families have told me from my community that they were, they were planning to go and they were going to bring their wee ones. And I said that was absolutely expected because that's part of the experience. So be prepared.
Thank you. Trustee Graves.
Halton Food for Thought is inviting members and community partners to join them for their annual general meeting, which is also tomorrow night in Milton at Jean Vagnier High School from 6:30 to 8:30. So I can give the link to anyone who might be interested in attending that, along with Director Miller.
Thanks. Thank you. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you. I had forgotten about one other invitation. One other invitation, I'll send it forward to you. It is on December 10th. It's going to be at Milton District High School, oh, sorry, it's at the Milton Learning Center. And I'm just trying to pull up the details. It is a, it is a reconciliation. It is an invitation to join at the Milton Staff Center for a half-day training session covering the Four Seasons of Reconciliation classroom resources and school-wide awareness campaign for secondary schools. The session is a training guide for Grade 10 teachers at the Halton District School Board, who will be piloting this resource in early 2016 in Grade 10 history. So it is predominantly for teachers, but I have meeting queries, and I've gotten invitations for the trustees as well, if you would care to join us. So I will be forwarding that to you as well.
Thank you. Is there any other trustee comments or questions tonight? We've had quite a few. Seeing none, we are, now can I have a motion to rise into private? Trustee Gabens, seconded by trustee Gray. Just a minute, I gotta go to the voting. Jovan didn't sign it. I'm guessing Sophie didn't either. So that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We will reconvene in five minutes. Thank you.